Welcome. This is November 6, 2023, work session of the Salisbury City Council. Upon the adjournment of this meeting at approximately 5:30 PM, council will convene in a closed session. In the event of an emergency, we ask that everyone remain calm and exit through the double doors to the parking lot located in front corner of this building. If the doors are blocked, please exit through the door to my right by pulling the fire alarm located to the right of the door under the monitor. Please let us know if you need any assistance. At this time, we ask that everyone please silence your cell phones. Public comments on any topic presented this evening will be heard at the end of the agenda. Please complete a form provided at the table by the double doors and give the city clerk. You will be called in the order of receipt. Okay, we have a presentation by Mr. Matthew McConaughey.
McConaughey.
McConaughey. See, I didn't want to get it mixed up with the real Matthew Matthews.
He's the real Matthew.
Yeah. Exact same spelling, exact same pronunciation.
Same thing.
All right, all right.
So were you named in his honor?
No, I was born before he was famous.
Okay, okay.
I appreciate you all having me here today.
Thank you.
I was asked by Michelle to kind of just give a overview of the Health Department's accomplishments over this past year. So I'll go ahead and I'll kind of get started for you all. I just wanted to provide an update on respiratory conditions here in the county. COVID, we're currently not at the rates or trend lines that we saw last year, so that's a very good blessing. The bivalent vaccine is no longer recommended, and we do not have that in stock anymore. We've now switched to the monovalent vaccine. That's recommended for everyone five years and older. It's a one-dose monovalent booster vaccine. The COVID vaccines have now gone fee-for-service, or they've been commercialized, meaning that they're no longer free to individuals. The good news is your insurance will cover it. For those who are underinsured or not insured, there's the Bridge Access Program that the Health Department, local pharmacies, and FQHCs, federally qualified health centers, are a part of and can provide that vaccination free of charge. As far as flu, the new flu surveillance season starts started in early October. We've had minimal hospitalizations in title health. Again, flu vaccine is recommended for all persons at least six months of age and who do not have any contradictions or other health issues. About 1 in 4 Wacomico residents of all ages received a flu vaccine last season, so that's very good. RSV compared, we're only at 14 hospitalizations throughout the entire state compared to 110 the same week of last year. Last year is when we were hitting the, what they termed the tridemic of RSV, flu, and COVID. So our numbers are significantly lower than what they've been comparatively to the trends of last year. There's also a new RSV vaccine. This vaccine is approved for use in people over 60, and it began at the same time as flu and COVID. Even though RSV is viewed as a pediatric disease, an estimated 60,000, 100,000 older adults are hospitalized and up to 10,000 die from RSV infections each year. So I would recommend anyone who's eligible to please receive a RSV vaccination. You're not just protecting yourself, but your loved ones, grandchildren, and all those that you come into contact with. As far as updates around behavioral health, mental health, and overdoses, we have started to see an increase in xylazine usage in the area. This was reported from HIDA in our Baltimore DC area. The trend of xylazine has moved into the eastern shore. Xylazine is an animal tranquilizer that's been used with other substances. It's been used to cut because it's cheap and it is said to increase or elongate the high that's obtained from opioid use. The main issue with xylazine is that Narcan is not responsive to it, so it does not alleviate the symptoms of overdose. Additionally, in any cuts or injuries, the xylazine will zaps right the issue, causing sores to further develop, and for those injuries not to heal, which provides elongated wound care needed. And when that occurs, a lot of treatment centers will not accept people who have open wounds or sores. So xylazine is restricting and keeping people who are wanting to become clean or seek treatment from getting those options. I think that for that, that's the main point I wanted to educate you all on. Vital statistics data, we're currently awaiting some updated information. But for the 12-month period ending in May of '22, there were 45 total fatal overdoses in Wacomico compared to 39 for the 12-month period ending in May '23. So that is a decrease of 13.3%. The Health Department participates in a lot of community events. Go Purple was our big month where we do overdose awareness. We sponsored Overdose Awareness Day at Warehouse Park. We had a Go Purple kickoff event at the Shore Birds. Participated in the first-ever Rock for Recovery at Oak Ridge. Again, participated with Shadowed Stigma Walk at Warwick Community College and participated in the interview clothing drive across the county. Some fiscal year 23 performance management. We are FAB accredited. We are in our reaccreditation status, and we have now received reaccreditation for five years. We were, I believe, the fifth... We were the fourth Health Department across the state of Maryland to receive our reaccreditation status for the next five years. This means that we uphold quality improvement, quality assurance, and uphold the best standard of care for all patients and clients that we serve. It's a nationally recognized accreditation system. We will be continuing to onboard staff into our performance management and quality improvement cycles and ensuring that we uphold the best care we can for the residents here. Two out of every three agency measures hit our targets in fiscal year 23. We had improvements in mental health clients with an up-to-date depression screening, errors assessment completed in 30 days. We had timely medical assistance transportation recertifications, and we increased the number of persons trained in mental health first aid. One of our big improvement areas that we wanted to focus on that we fell short of in fiscal year '22 was providing Narcan trading to those with social experience. We missed our goal of 300 in fiscal year '23, but this triggered our first performance management quality improvement project for this fiscal year. We're partnering with Salisbury Fire Department with the Leave Behind Program where we're offering Narcan when responding onsite to overdose events. While not required, is the hope that more Narcan get in the hands of those who are at a higher risk. As far as our strategic planning and annual report, we do this process every five years. Our current plan was recently published, and this carries us all the way to 2027. We developed this with multi-stage process, including a SWOT analysis with all agency staff, Health Improvement Coalition, and then agency senior managers as well. Our annual report is on our website for anyone to go and review it, but I'll overview what our priorities are going forward. Our priority one is health improvement, and it's to address the top health needs in Wacomico County as identified through our community health needs assessment. Our main focus areas are access to healthcare, behavioral health, and chronic disease and wellness. Through these, we'll be increasing the number of community health workers employed at Wacomico County Health Department so that we have better compliance and better representation of the community we serve. For behavioral health, we're increasing our intensive outpatient clients who successfully complete the program, providing COAT services to the community. 63.5% of COAT team clients have been linked to treatment, and 98% of clients are still in recovery six months after their first encounter with COAT. COAT is a valuable tool and asset to the community, and we will continue to see this progress and expand. Chronic disease, we're exceeding screening goals for breast and cervical cancer screening as well as colon screening. And we have a current diabetes prevention program cohort that has retained 15 participants. This is the CDC Prevent T2 curriculum. It is a year-long program that helps and shows notable increases in diabetes management and weight loss. Our second priority is communication, improving internal and external communication. This is a great opportunity for that external communication, so we greatly appreciate that, to be more transparent and open to the community. Internally, we had internal communication assessment where we expanded our internal avenues as having health officer chats, roundtables, and having all of our senior management meetings recap for the whole agency. Externally, we continue to grow with on our social media accounts, bringing on LEAP interpreters, especially for our growing Spanish and Haitian crew and Portuguese. And then we're onboarding interpreters and have expanded with additional vendors to provide better translation and interpretation service to our clients. The most notable is a new vendor for American Sign Language that provides on-demand interpretation, which is very needed for us because we've been dealing with scheduling, but now we're able to work in clients more readily. Our third priority is workforce. We are an aging workforce. One in five Health Department employees could retire in the next five years. So what we're doing is developing our workforce, providing lunch and learns, doing succession planning, and future site for the future. Currently working on NFT's district of professional development with the Core Competencies of Public Health Workforce. Our final priority is technology, providing technical assistance through our epidemiologists to several agencies throughout the county and city, and then agency management information system, upgrading our technology and coming back from the outage of the Maryland Department of Health Network that occurred. That is my brief and very quick overview of our accomplishments over the past fiscal year. I'm happy to take any comments or questions that you have.
Can I get into that?
I just want to, I don't want us to brush past the fact that there's now a vaccine available for RSV. That is a huge, huge deal. I've seen what it does to people, and adults and children, and it's incredibly serious. And the fact that we now have a vaccine available is huge. I'm really glad to hear that.
There's also a vaccine, of course, for young pediatric children as well. And it's just so important to get because we are limited in the amount of pediatric beds that we have here on the eastern shore. You know, pediatric surgeons and trainings have been ongoing to make sure that we don't sustain anything like we had to do last year.
Yeah, it was bad last year, so we were in the hospital with that last year.
Yeah.
It was rough. It was very rough. It's not like anything I've seen before. So it's, I'm very glad that we've got that. Now, would people be able to get the vaccine through the Health Department, or would they need to contact their provider for that?
They can, but I recommend reaching out to a primary care provider or pharmacy. We do have it, but ours are reserved for like that VFC funding.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And I just want to make sure I have the statistics right. Could you walk through that percentage you had on the overdoses between this cycle and last cycle?
Yeah, okay.
Okay. That's where I thought it was. I want to make sure I'm quoting it right.
For the 12-month period ending in May of '22, there were 45 fatal overdoses in Wacomico compared to 39 for the 12-month period ending in May 2023, a decrease of 13.3%. We also saw a downturn of 4% of ED-related encounters.
Any more questions or comments? Well, Mr. McConaughey, we would love to thank you for giving us an update on the Health Department's standpoint, and we're glad that you did hear your annual report. And we're glad to hear we have some good, we do have some good news.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Andy, City Administrator.
Thought I'd sit here and make it a little easier for everybody's neck. So first item I have here is the budget amendment accepting funds from the state of Maryland for $4 million for infrastructure on Lot 10. Lot 10 is the property that we sold via Resolution 3212 that ended up being sold at the end of March of 2023 to Mentis Capital Partners LLC. We are fortunate enough during this past funding round through the state of Maryland to apply for $6 million in Pago funding, and we received $4 million for this year and preauthorized $2 million for next year. Without this funding, this project probably would not have moved forward because of rising costs and interest rates. So we're really excited that the state came through. Shout out to Carl Anderton and the Reston Eastern Shore delegation for making this a priority and moving this forward. So luckily enough, we have that funding. What I'm requesting right now is a budget amendment to accept the award for that funding so that we can start the process of redeveloping that site. And I can answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
None. We've talked about this.
Yes, yeah, we've talked about this. Yeah, we have. So do we have consensus to move this forward to legislative system? Okay, yes, okay.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you, Andy. And we now have the Maryland Festival Arts and Business and Culture Director, Alan Swain.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, how are you?
All right. So I am here to request consideration for an amendment to appropriate funds for the Second Annual Maryland Folk Festival that is scheduled for September 20th through the 22nd in 2024. These funds will be utilized for all facets of the festival operations, including staffing, production fees, artist fees, equipment, staging, lighting, and more. So the city has determined that $85,012 required for this program to be transferred from the general fund in addition to the revenues estimated below. We determined that $589,700 appropriations are required to hold this festival. That's holding a three-day, four-stage festival. The breakdown of the revenues generated is below, but I would actually refer you to Schedule A of the ordinance where you can kind of see a better breakdown of how those use of funds and where we will acquire them. So onsite sales, vendor revenue, sponsorships, donations, and then, of course, the transfer from general. What you don't see on Schedule A is an additional $125,000 in grants that we've already applied for and have heard good things back. And we expect those to be coming as well to help support the event. Any questions?
Okay. Sorry, go ahead, Deshaun. Just a question on the grants. Do we have a rough timeline, and will we anticipate some responses on those?
So those are, let me think, early spring.
Those are grants that we've received every year for this festival, so we don't see any indication that we won't receive them again.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anybody else?
So I think two questions. But the first one, did we do any, since, again, we had the pending weather for this year, did we alter the budget and the schedule for next year just to make sure that the festival doesn't hinder us financially and fiscally?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, first-year event, you're always spending a little bit more money in operations and getting the supplies and stuff to be able to make it a sustainable event. The one thing we did not invest in last year was rain insurance. So it is built into this festival to do so. We are two years in a row with a rain out date. So we recognize the risk that goes into it. But on a positive note, even with that, we still did not lose money on the event last year.
Okay, good. And the sponsorship, so is that just a plan year and sort of a low-level amount there? Or are we, so is this anticipatory?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, based on previous years.
Okay.
And the other thing to keep in mind, too, is the size and scope of this festival will be based on the amount of work we get in sponsorship.
Thank you.
Okay, and I heard you say we didn't lose any money on this?
Correct.
So we balanced out, or, I mean, because you're saying we didn't?
Mm-hmm. Pretty much a balance out.
Okay. Are we going to be getting presented just like some numbers from this past folk festival later on? I know that you guys are really still generating that.
Yeah, we have a few outstanding invoices that we're going to get paid, and we'll close out the actual budget itself. And then Beacon was also onsite doing their annual report, so we'll have some economic numbers to share as well.
I'd love to hear those numbers. That's what I'm excited for.
I mean, you know, a little skewed. The last day, can't help it with the rain, but it's still overall promising figures.
Gives us a good idea of what to expect next cycle.
Absolutely.
Okay. Do we have a consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have the cannabis zoning code modifications. City Planner, Brian Soper.
I was the speaker. This is Brian.
Okay. You're fine. You're fine. He was talking back in the corner.
He was hiding. He was talking back in the corner.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
So I will go ahead and start. You've heard enough about the cannabis regulations that have come down in the state and what their proposals are for local regulation. Where we stand now is we have a proposed ordinance with proposed amendments to the zoning code to permit the growing processing and dispensing of cannabis in the city. Couple of things to note, that the districts for growing processing are the Light Industrial and Industrial Park District. It should be noted that the industrial zoning district was not included due to their location and existing uses. Those locations are the Cato Office Building over on Parsons, the wastewater treatment plant, the field ops location, the old Dresser Wayne facility, and those are the large ones I can remember that would be able to house an operation of this size. So those were left off to the location and existing uses. The last one would be the actual dispensaries would be located in General Commercial District as a ordinance permit. We do not see too many of them. The reason for that is, as there is liquor stores and dispensaries, there are also an ordinance permit in that district. What that allows is an additional level of review by the Planning Commission and the council to pass an ordinance after a Planning Commission recommendation in public hearing to permit the use. At that time, the parking numbers or the parking regulations and requirements will be established for that site use specifically. We are not anticipating too many dispensary licenses. I believe the number is two to three based on the first round of licensing. And I think that's where we are, and it's a point we're looking forward to admit to first reading.
Just to remind them that it's already gone through Planning Commission and the...
Yeah, they, sorry, yes, they had a public hearing on October 19th, and they informed a favorable recommendation.
And I don't have anything to add. We've been in front of you a couple times on this issue and kind of fleshed it out, but we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, now, being on the county planning and zoning, I heard, it was said, that most of the dispensaries were supposed to be put in the impoverished neighborhoods. Now, I want to know if that is so.
It would depend on the, we don't, so the General Commercial pretty much runs the district north-south along 13. We do not know of any specific locations yet. So at that point, we're just permitting the use, and then at that point, we'll wait for the applicants to actually come in to find out where they're going to be.
Well, could we be kept abreast of that? You know, I mean, because I would truly love to know, because I feel like that's something that we don't need in our communities, in our impoverished communities as well. We have enough going on, and I think that was because they wanted to, from what I was understanding, they wanted the guys who were on the street selling to realize that we're somebody else and would cut them out from selling. But I just don't see this playing in a good way. So I just want to, I don't want this to happen in our communities, especially in our impoverished communities. I think it should be localized in several different, if we're going to have two or three, they need to be located in different places, not all in one direct place, or at least not in an impoverished community.
Yeah, I think the setbacks should cover some of the issues. So the state setback is 500 that's established. The state law does give you the ability to reduce it. We have recommended that the council at that time an ordinance permit can only reduce it by 250 feet, so to 250 feet. The additionally is there's a thousand-foot setback from any other cannabis operation. So that should allow for them to, at least, they're not necessarily punched together. Because the overlapping of the 500-foot setback and the 1,000-foot setback should encourage them to space themselves out.
The ordinance permit process ensures that you know where they're going because they would apply for an ordinance permit, go to the Planning Commission for recognition, and then they would come in front of you all.
Any other questions?
No, you answered your last question I had, too.
Okay.
Thank you both.
Okay. Do we have consensus to move this forward? Okay, it's now time for public comments.
Here we are.
And please remember, public comments will be heard on the topics presented this evening. General public comments will be heard at the next legislative session on November the 13th. So I have, is this Lisa Gingrich?
My name's Lisa Gingrich, 316 North Division. I just wanted to make an overall comment. Getting more state funds for this, state funds for that. Does the city exist without grants? Can we live within our own means? I don't, I believe that in the original resolution or whatever it's called for the hotel and everything, that there was nothing about infrastructure. We asked that question about the downtown. We were told everything's fine down there. And now we're looking at infrastructure over here. So we're taking money from the rest of Maryland so that the city can be in the development business, which I don't quite understand. And it just seems like this is the pattern of behavior, and this is how we do things. Is we don't do anything unless we get a special grant for it. And I don't see how that's a sustainable business model at all, especially when there's things like trash trucks that need repairing and there's other things that need to be done. Just, I mean, the laundry list, and you all know what they are, of general things that need to be done, and they're not being addressed. Instead, we've got to have another shiny glitzy project. We've got to do this. We've got to do that. Developers should look at something and say, this is my business. I'm going to take certain risks, and this is what's going to happen. But no, city's got to shoulder it, got to get grants, got to do this, got to do that. And, you know, and same time, people have been promised affordable housing. All the downtown were luxury. Over on, what do you call it? The other lot over there is going to be all luxury. You know, again, it's, let's take the money we have and let's, let's put it into what every, everyday people need, instead of these vanity projects and using the citizens as your ATM. Either, again, whether it's a citizen of Salisbury or a citizen somewhere else in the state that you're taking the money from. And you just, it just, I just don't get it, I don't see how the city has existed this long if this is what we're doing. Is that my end?
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds, okay, well, I guess there's nothing else that I can say in 30 seconds, really, except on the dispensaries, looking at West Ocean City, you have huge lines at the dispensary in West Ocean City on 50, and is that being taken into consideration, that kind of thing? And where, where these things go? Anyway, that's it.
Thank you.
Next is Ms. Carolyn Walgemuth.
I have a question first, I didn't hear, is there a time limit on this?
It's three, three minutes, three.
Three.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. But initially, my name is Carolyn Walgemuth. Initially, I had no intention to attend and speak at this final work session of this administration, city council, but the curveballs are still being thrown. Therefore, when I saw on the agenda the acceptance of millions of dollars of Maryland grant funds to the city, I wondered why we would apply infrastructure grant money to Lot 10. That's when I discovered numerous unknown facts regarding Lot 10 by researching it. As Mr. Kestrow brought up, it was in Resolution 3212. There's no mention of the city utilizing any future state grant funds to fund infrastructure improvements to develop Lot 10. That parking lot was already sold for $75,000. As a matter of fact, it appears there were three bidders, one bid for $500,000, six and a half times that $75,000 sale fee, by the way. And the city, through an evaluation process, determined that Mentis Capital Partners' proposal offered the highest and best value to the city, and that the sale of Lot to Mentis Lot 10 LLC was in the best interest of the citizens of the city. Begs the question, what criteria was used in that evaluation? So many of our parking lots were designated surplus and RFPs were issued and awarded during the pandemic when meetings were conducted by Zoom, and citizens were more concerned about their health, trusting the mayor and the council to do their jobs ethically. Apparently, we were too trusting, and they didn't do their jobs, not to the benefit of citizens. Why would we now give city grant money to the developer? This would be another Bennie in addition to Horizon, and here is Home. Why would we not use that infrastructure grant money to fix our roads, our sidewalks, our street lighting, our traffic lights, our garbage vehicles? The list goes on and on. This is just incredible. Then near the end of the agenda, I see that the council will be engaged in another closed session. The Resolution 3170, which concerned PFAS, was passed by the city council in an open session on May 23rd, 2022. Why then are you now conducting a closed session to receive an update on the PFAS legislation or lawsuit from council and city staff? It's another in a long list of secret meetings for issues that should be in public view. You are the opposite of transparent. The hits to the public are nonstop now. I guess you feel that you need to push through everything you can possibly squeeze in at the 11th hour. You need to stop, and you need to be stopped. You need to be resoundingly voted out of office tomorrow. Thank you. Nancy Royson?
Three minutes, ma'am. Okay, I'm scratching off. Hi, I'm Nancy Royson. I live on 209 Beaver Dam Drive. I'm speaking in reference to the budget amendment to accept funds for the state Maryland grant for infrastructure improvements. I just completed looking at the Sanborn maps for Lot 10 area, and I do not see any major source of contamination, such as filling stations or auto repair facilities. But prior, but due to the many buildings, dwellings, a church, undertaker, and other commercial light industrial buildings, shops once located there, one may safely assume that each has associated with it an underground heating fuel oil storage tank. These eventually rust and leak. Sometimes the owner uses them up before abandoning, and the empty tank is left in place. However, for individual homeowners, government, and businesses, there are stringent and costly requirements for disposal. The city could be on the hook for excavating and properly disposing of dozens of underground fuel oil storage tanks, empty or with product, and any associated contamination of the soil or removal and proper disposal of products left in and around them. Back in the 60s, when the city declared these areas surplus and bulldozed down the structures, they may have had the foresight and taken care to excavate these tanks. Records must be found to document that, document that, and precisely locate where. In the meantime, it would be realistic and prudent to utilize the services of a licensed environmental engineering consultant to investigate the entire site for the presence of these tanks and other underground anomalies that would predicate further testing and possible remedial action. So I firmly recommend the city proceed to secure proof that the site is clean before entering any further real estate transactions regarding Lot 10. Please consider this potential cost in using the four to six million dollar grant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. John Walgemuth?
I'm John Walgemuth, 1118 Granby's Run. I just want to get into the specifics of why do we award contracts for 75K when we had a $500,000 offer on the table? There was no criteria, there's no information in the acceptance of proposal, why we did that? It just, on the surface, and probably under the surface, looks like a deal that was struck behind closed doors.
That's not what, that wasn't, the budget amendment was discussing the contract of selecting a winner.
It is in your resolution. It is in the resolution. Page nine of your resolution, you might want to check that. It's a lot of work to find it, but there's a $500,000 offer made to City of Oz, City Works Oz, $500,000. It's a lot more, my wife mentioned it, six and a half times of what you accepted. We don't know why, it looks suspicious. There's no documentation about that at all. Then there's no documentation of what improvements would be done to Lot 10 that are more important to our general infrastructure in the city. Again, we need roads, we need traffic lights, we need garbage disposals throughout the city. We don't need to give millions of dollars to a contractor who's already getting Horizon programs, and we get no tax revenues for five years, and then 10% for the first decade. That's another way to go into a physical disaster. So again, where is this information? It's not in the proposal, it's not anywhere. You conduct closed meetings, we don't get the minutes from closed meetings. That could be an opportunity to discuss anything you want to push through in the last seven days of this administration. Overall, it's very suspicious.
Thank you. Mr. Robert Taylor?
Good evening, Robert Taylor, longtime Salisbury resident. The things that are on the agenda tonight, frankly, all of them could have waited, as far as I can see, until we get the new city council and the new mayor. And I don't know why they weren't. But to address a couple of them, this proposal for the hotel and whatnot on Lot 10, this grant from the state is just going to be the beginning of the public subsidy of that project, at least according to the developers' plans. Unfortunately, Maryland is one of these states that takes money and then spends it for things like this. That's one reason why Maryland is not looked upon favorably for business to locate here, because they take money like this and send it to a developer, or provide it to a developer for benefit, for a project that might otherwise be unfeasible. And of course, they're going to come in and ask for the Horizon 20-year tax break. Hopefully, the next council will put the kibosh on that. And they're going to ask that they have their connection fees waived, just like the Ross did, what was that, close to $400,000, I think, the mayor to know, he was on the council then. And that's what we've seen. Now, I'm going to just skip down to the closed session tonight. As far as I know, this pertains to a, what they call, multi-district litigation in the federal court system. There are thousands of cases that have been combined in the federal court down in Charleston, South Carolina, all basically involving contamination of drinking water by these PFAS chemicals. And essentially, it's just going to be formulaic. There isn't an agreed settlement amount, or proposed settlement amount, by two of the big companies, 3M and DePont, but it'll all be formulaic. It'll be based on size, number of residents, how long they've used the chemicals, there'll be a formula. It sounds like a lot of money, $14 billion, but probably upwards of a third of that is going to go to the attorneys, and there are thousands of them involved in this case. There are thousands of lawsuits that have been combined. So our slice is going to be a slice of a reduced amount, and it's going to be a very thin slice, and it's going to be paid out over a number of years. I'm not against it, great, it's free money that we might not otherwise have, but there's no reason to discuss this in closed session. And that's really been, I think, the abysmal part of this council. Good night.
Thank you. Okay, now, we will have administration comments?
Sure, I've got a couple of things to say. First, I want to thank the council for all of their efforts in the, in the recent months and years on all the redevelopment projects, helping us move things forward that are vital to the success of Salisbury. So thank you for your continued support, including this evening. The revitalization and redevelopment of downtown is crucial to our future, so thank you for continuing to stay focused on the path that we've taken and to move these projects forward. Second, I'd like to thank you all for continuing to move legislation forward. Yes, there's an election tomorrow, but your duty and opportunity to move forward crucial legislation exists until you're no longer in that seat, so thank you for not taking a hiatus and continuing to move things forward. I really appreciate that. And then finally, I'd like to thank our legal team, our city clerk, and all of our department heads for continuing to put forward sound legislation that gets almost unanimously support from the council. I support you and commend your efforts to make sure that we are transparent with the efforts that we have and the legislation that we put forward, and that allows us to continue to move the city forward. So thank you for, for all those efforts.
Thank you, Andy. Mayor?
I was going to comment tonight, but I'm going to wait till next, the next meeting, when it's my last meeting, and then I'll have a lot to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor?
Thank you, April. As always, thank everyone for coming out tonight. It means a lot that you take the time out of your Monday evening to spend it with us and provide public comment. As you all know, we have an election tomorrow, so I hope you all exercise your right, and you're out at the polls tomorrow, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. I'll speak for my district and just say for anyone in District 3, your polling location's going to be Asbury United Methodist Church. And then outside of political conversations, outside of campaign conversations, I have an event going on in my district that I just want to let everyone aware of. On Friday, Bagel Bakery will be unveiling a mural dedicated to the city, 9:30 a.m. I hope to see you all there, and just enjoy a local business, a local bagel, and see some beautiful art.
Thank you.
Just, just two things. One, I mean, obviously, if you're healthy enough, please don't eat blood, save a life. It could be your life you save, you don't know. Other than that, I'm very tired. I just want to brag just a minute, I'm a very proud mom. Fantastic wedding, my son got married this weekend in Manhattan, it was, it was wonderful. I'm so happy, but I'm also so, so tired.
Okay, Ms. Cho. I just want to, you know, reiterate what others have said. Ask people to do their civic duty, go vote. Many people have fought and even died for this right, and it would be nothing less than disrespectful, I feel, to not exercise that right. I hope to see you over at Wycomico Presbyterian Church, which is the polling place for District 4. And other than that, I just want everybody to have a safe and healthy week.
Okay.
Yes, so I'll echo my fellow council members that, please, Salisbury, exercise your right to vote tomorrow for District 2. Our polling place is Oak Ridge Baptist Church, out in the old Kmart shopping center, but now the new Junior Achievement Center near there, where I'm a proud board member. So from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Additionally, I had the wonderful opportunity last week to attend Wycomico High School's instructional leadership teams meeting, discussing some concerns about the roundabout. So I was, loved being welcomed by them and hearing their concerns from faculty, teachers, parents, and just staff there. So that was a wonderful conversation, I want to thank them again for inviting me and keeping that open dialogue there. Additionally, I spent the better half of my day today attending the, an affordable housing conference this morning in Hanover, Maryland. So, one, we are not alone in just in our jurisdiction, in our backyards, when it comes to affordable housing. It is a statewide, and of course, it's a national issue, but the thing that sets us apart is we need local support. So from our cities, our counties, and of course, our state, there's no way to make this work without local involvement, and that's, that's seen from the top down and from the bottom up. So I urge our, our friends at the county to hear this loud and clearly, that we need your help in order to make affordable housing real. We need our county council and our county executive to become vocal on affordable housing, because it is a humanitarian issue. It's not a, it's a human right. So thank you all for that. And also, I, a couple moments, I glanced at my phone, but my mother is in flight right now from Atlanta, so I just want to make sure I get that text that says that she lands safely. So I've been glancing at my phone, just, she should be landing at any moment, so I'm the opposite of Angela, I'm a, the son of the mother, but I'm a mama's boy, so I'm waiting on that text here, and I'm so excited to see her, so thank you all.
Okay, it's my opportunity to talk. I'm kind of proud of myself, last week in the community, the district, because we had a lot of people from places. I wasn't even aware that we had. Last week, we had 244 kids off the street, trick-or-treating, doing the trunk and treat. And the kids had a wonderful time, and I say wonderful time, a wonderful time, by the time I got home, I was so wore out. I didn't know whether to go to sleep or sit up, but it was just the, the opportunity to see young people engaged in a fam, in families, actually, there were families there too. There were fathers there with their children. It was just an awesome time, and the kids had an awesome time, and I'm just so proud of everybody that came and was a part of that, and all the help that I had. I had numerous people that came out and helped me, donated, whatever, they were just there. So I just would like to thank everybody in the VFW 10159 for hosting it and helping me with it, they did a marvelous job. And anytime that we can keep our young people off the street out of crime, that's a blessing to me, and it inspires me to do more and more and more, and I will do more and more and more. and more. I also will inspire everybody and ask, and encourage everybody to go vote tomorrow. Vote, vote, vote. I've had the opportunity to go to some people who were not registered and didn't want to register, and I can understand, but I don't understand, because everybody's vote counts. So I'm going to say this, if you're a registered voter, go out and vote tomorrow. I don't, wherever district you're in, vote, cast your vote. I'm in District 1, I represent District 1. District 1's voting poll is 325 Cypress Street, Forest Station number 16. Please get there. We're open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. tomorrow. So I'm looking forward to seeing millions, we don't even have a million in Salisbury, but I'm just looking to be seeing overflow tomorrow. I'd like to thank everyone who did speak, always. You may not think that we hear you, you may not think that we even care, but we do. We really do. I can say I do. Also, I'd like to wish everyone that is on that ballot tomorrow the best of luck. Wish you the best. So those are my words. Our meeting is now adjourned, and I need a motion to convene and a second to convene in closed session. Some more?
Second.
Can the motion clarify the basis, please?
You can't do.
Excuse me?
Can you clarify the basis of going into closed session?
Okay, this work session is now adjourned. Can I have a motion and a second to convene in closed session to consult with council to obtain legal advice on a legal matter and to consult with staff?
You cannot close the work session. You have to leave that.
This is what?
Okay.
This is what's on there. Adjourned, and then you go to the motion to convene in closed session.
If you'd read the whole thing, though.
Yeah, but I have to read this. Legal advice on a legal matter to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigations as permitted under the authority of the Maryland Open Meetings Law, Anecdote Code of Maryland, General Provisions Act, Article 3-305B78. The council will receive an update on the PFAS lawsuit from council and city staff.